Big day.
Not quite, I'm just calling, that was pre-called order.
It's the first ballot.
Oh, good. All right. Great. Got a half a minute.
Thanks.
Who?
I don't know.
Josh.
Josh, yeah.
I don't know, I'm nerdy. I thought he was going to be up next week, not this week.
Okay. All right, we'll call the meeting to order. Welcome everyone tonight to the council meeting. And we have a special department head invocation tonight. Hal?
Thanks, Hal.
Good Lord, pray. Dear the gracious Father, we come to unite and just thank you. We thank you of the grace that you give each and every one of us. The Lord, I just ask for some grace and some understanding as this council comes together and it serves the city of Orson. We would thank you for everything you do and the protection you put over our city to protect us and love us the way you do in your precious day.
Thanks, Hal.
Ledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, Hal. Appreciate it. So let the minutes reflect that there are six council members here. I don't see anyone virtually, so we do have a quorum. And with that, we'll consider the minutes from July 6th that have been presented. Those are in your board pack. Were there any adjustments necessary to those?
Having read the minutes, I would make a motion to approve.
Is there a second, Jeff? Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed? All right, thank you. So, we have a visitor tonight, Lisa Harmon from Livwell-Cosiasco. Is going to give us a presentation. I would ask that you avail yourselves to her expertise. I believe next month you'll find a non-for-profit request from Livwell. So I think this is, this will give you a little idea of it's a new organization. And rather than me butchering it up, I'd have Lisa get started and give us, give us your thoughts.
Okay, thank you. So, just, yeah, a little bit about Livwell. So we are a small nonprofit here in Cosiasco County. And our mission is to promote health, well-being, and engagement here in the county. So we have two main, or two, four main initiatives that we really are working on right now. We support the Cosiasco Tobacco-Free Coalition, the Cancer Consortium of Cosiasco County. We have an Employer Health and Wellness Coalition. And what I'm going to talk to you tonight about is our Healthy Community Initiative. So the Healthy Community Initiative actually began with the Cosiasco Chamber of Commerce. They have a committee that's called the Healthcare Committee. And it's been kind of going for actually at least 15 years, if not longer. And so we've done several things as far as health and well-being for that committee. And we were kind of thinking of a framework to do something new. And we decided to use Gallup. Gallup does global and national well-being surveys. And so, I think it was 2019, we started talking about it. K-21 is a partner, the Zimmer Biomet Foundation is a partner, and the Cosiasco County Community Foundation is a partner. So we all kind of came together, decided on this framework, and decided to fund this well-being survey. So we were planning to do the well-being survey in March of 2020. And then, of course, everyone knows what happened in March of 2020, COVID. And so we waited and we decided to do the survey between September 14th and October 14th of 2020. Actually turned out that was a pretty good time to do the survey, just because we were in between kind of those COVID surges. And then also, the kids had gone back to school, so people were pretty happy about that. So Gallup ended up sending out 5,000 surveys. So it was a random survey, so just 5,000 addresses here in Cosiasco County. We had a response rate of 26%, which is actually really good. If they get a response rate between 20 and 22%, they're really happy. I think it was probably because maybe more people were home still because of COVID. But whatever it was, we'll take it. So what is well-being? So well-being, according to Gallup, and there are lots of different frameworks, and there are some that you see that might have six different areas, up, all the way up to nine different areas. But we really liked Gallup's. And so what it means is living a life well-lit. And what some people think of when they think of well-being is just being happy or being healthy. But really, according to the Gallup model, there are five interrelated areas. So purpose, career well-being, you like what you do every day. Social well-being, you have meaningful friendships in your life. Financial well-being, you manage your money well. And then physical well-being, you have energy to get things done. So one of the things that Gallup asks, they ask on a scale of one to 10, how you would rate your, where you feel that you fall as far as your best possible life is concerned. Where are you right now and where do you think you'll be five years from now? And anyone who kind of answers seven, eight plus, they consider to be thriving. This is really kind of hard to see. But basically, what it's showing is just how people in the past have evaluated their well-being. And you can see it's gone anywhere from, you know, 50s all the way up. And then, when COVID hit last year, you can see that there was a rapid decrease in well-being. What is very interesting, though, is as of June 2021, it not only surpassed well-being pre-COVID, but it actually has gone up to a record high. People are reporting well-being at 59.2% nationally. Whoops. Another slide, daily stress and worry. You can see kind of the same thing happened last year. You can look at 2018, and then you can see it went down during COVID. And it has started to go, it has started to go back down. I'm sorry, it went up dramatically because of COVID, and it has started to go back down. And that's what people said their stress and worry looked like on a daily basis. And so, one of the reasons I kind of shared that was because I wanted to make sure that people understood that even though the survey kind of took place during, you know, COVID, interestingly enough, here in Cosiasco County, we were a little bit, a little bit, well, as you can see, we were more optimistic about the pandemic than American adults nationally. Only 24% reported that it was worsening compared to 61% nationally. Same thing with people being worried about being infected with COVID. Very, very different numbers. And then also, people who were experiencing worry and stress, it was substantially lower than national levels here in Cosiasco County. So, the overall well-being index score, it was actually great news for Cosiasco County. So our well-being index score exceeded U.S. levels. And that was really because of very high levels in the area of career, financial, and community well-being. So Gallup actually does this study in 156 metro areas. And if you compare Cosiasco County's well-being score, we actually ranked 20th out of all of those metropolitan areas. So we think that's like really great. So we do have some challenges and some opportunities, though. In physical well-being, the disease burden is elevated in Cosiasco County. Physical pain, high blood pressure, and lifetime occurrences of heart attack and cancer all exceed national levels. Our obesity, overweight, those are higher than national levels. The number of people who had, percentage of people who had five-plus servings of fruits or vegetables for at least four days in the last week was much lower than the national average. And then people who have visited dentists in the last 12 months was much, much lower than the national average. Good news about the number of people who have a personal doctor, though. Our residents reported good levels of emotional health and remaining active and productive, but poor views of physical appearance. And some of that may be because of obesity and lack of dental care. Community well-being, so the residents of Cosiasco County report significantly greater pride in and emotional attachment to the area where they live than their counterparts nationally. So if you look at the questions, the city or area where you live is a perfect place for you, you're proud of your community, you always feel safe and secure. And then in the last 12 months, you've received recognition for helping to improve the city or the area where you live. So I will say that when you look at the numbers, we are better than the U.S. But you also can see with, you know, some of our scores, we also, there's always room for improvement. So financial well-being, so it's marginally better in Cosiasco County than across the U.S. Perceptions of relative standards of living are better. And food insecurity was five points lower. Social well-being, so that was mixed in Cosiasco County. Relationships with our partners are strong, but low marks for an accountability partner reveals a clear opportunity area. And this was specifically the question with someone in your life encourages you to be healthy. You can see that's almost 10 percentage points below the national numbers. Purpose, career well-being, so Cosiasco County residents report excellent levels of right fit in their lives and very good usage of their natural strengths. You like what you do every day, 10 percentage points above the national average. You get to use your strengths to do what you do best every day. Interestingly enough, there's a leader in your life who makes you enthusiastic about the future. So we were a little bit higher than the U.S. average, but not as good as in some of those other areas. And then you learn or do something interesting every day. Yeah, we scored a little bit lower than the national average there. So savings in Cosiasco County is comparable to the current national levels, with over half of respondents reporting some savings, while 12% were drawing on savings or adding to debt. And considering this was, you know, during COVID, that's actually probably looks pretty good. So highest return on improvement areas, this was suggestions that Gallup made. Obesity, physical pain, high blood pressure better managed, our produce consumption rate, forging accountability partners in health at home and at work, dentistry care, and then developing an intellectually curious culture, learning new and interesting things on a regular basis. And then just an overview of the main findings. We had a very good response rate. Our residents rate their lives generally much better than across the U.S. Overall, overall high well-being among residents of Cosiasco County, especially in the areas of career, financial, and community well-being. Like I mentioned, out of 156 areas, we ranked 20th. I will say that men, young adults, seniors, and middle-income households had, they held the largest margins over their counterparts nationally. So those groups are the ones that brought our numbers up. And levels of well-being for women are actually much lower than the levels of well-being for men in several areas in Cosiasco County. Okay, so what are we doing with all of this information? Well, that brings us to our well-being initiative. So we currently have five committees with 45 community members who are serving on those committees. And so we have a committee for each one of the pillars of well-being. So community well-being is about the sense of engagement you have with the area where you live. So our committee, they came up with this question. What if everyone in Cosiasco County felt safe and secure? What would that look like? They decided to develop a community initiative to support first responders while also addressing community member safety and security. And so they, their short-term objectives, because what we tried to do was we tried to have short-term objectives. And then our goal is to actually work on these five pillars over the next five years and then re-survey the community at the end of those five years to see if we kind of made any difference. But for their first short-term goal, it was by November 30th, 2021, we'll conduct and review research to identify the needs and concerns of our first responders and community members. Our social well-being is about having strong relationships and love in your life. So imagine if everyone in Cosiasco County felt a sense of belonging, what would that look like? And by October the 30th, 2021, that committee plans to host a cricket event in Cosiasco County that will build community connection and a sense of belonging for those who participate and the spectators. I learned through this initiative that we have a thriving cricket community in Cosiasco County. And I heard that it is the largest grow, or fastest-growing sport in the world. So we're looking forward to that event. So physical well-being is about having good health and enough energy to get things done on a daily basis. So the question that that committee came up with, imagine if healthy choices were the easy choices to make in Cosiasco County, what would that look like? And so by November 30th, 2021, we will identify and market a variety of free physical activity opportunities for families and residents in Cosiasco County in the evenings. Financial well-being is about, and that one, actually the physical one, that was specifically for the winter months, since it's kind of difficult to kind of find physical activity things to do in the winter months, so. Financial well-being is about effectively managing your economic life. So that committee, imagine if Cosiasco County residents had enough money to afford their basic needs and knew how to manage their money well. What would that look like? And so this short-term, the short-term objective for that committee is to design a Facebook financial group page that will provide engaging and informative content to increase financial literacy in Cosiasco County. And then our purpose, career well-being, is about liking what you do every day. So by the end of calendar year 2026, a majority of Cosiasco County adults surveyed report that they are thriving when it comes to their life's purpose. How do we help our citizens achieve greater career and purpose well-being? And so by this December, that committee plans to design a pilot mentoring coaching program for Cosiasco County residents to help our citizens achieve greater career and purpose well-being. And that's just our little Gallup copyright information. And then anyone that has questions, if you would like to get a copy of the presentation, can reach out to me and I'd be happy to get that information for you.
Lisa, I appreciate it. I know there might be a few questions. I think some of you are involved in some of these committees. Diane, so reaching into the community. I know it was kind of a drag having to go through last year and all that energy, but it looks like doing really well, so. I believe, do you have an event? Is it next week, an open house?
We actually do. We have an open house, it's actually this Thursday. So it's at Ivy Tech from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. And so the Career Purpose Well-being Committee is holding an open house, and they're asking for feedback on curriculum for that mentoring coaching program that they want to pilot starting in January. So anyone is, everyone's invited to that. Public's invited. Would be happy to get everyone's feedback.
And we've come up with things that we think we should address, broad categories that we think would be helpful for people. And we just like to get community feedback, are we on target before we start in?
Great. Any, any other comments or questions?
Do you have a facility?
Do we have a, well, Livwell, you mean?
Yes.
So we actually have a, the Health Department actually allows us to use one of the offices in the K-21 pavilion. And then I'm actually over at the K-21 Foundation a lot, using their offices as well. We have, we hold a lot of our committee meetings at the K-21 Foundation. So, but yeah, we don't have like a big building or...
This is a new group.
Yeah.
Fledgling organization.
So Lisa, are you full-time with Livwell?
I am, I'm full-time with Livwell, the Tobacco-Free Coalition Coordinator. So right now, our funding is mainly, we get funded by the state of Indiana for the Tobacco-Free Coalition. So we have a full-time person that's doing that work. And then I'm full-time. We have a part-time position actually open, so if anybody is interested, that's actually working with the schools, with the Tobacco-Free Coalition, working on kind of vaping education, that type of thing. But yeah.
Great. Well, thank you for your presentation tonight. Hopefully we'll get some of the word out. Now, those who may want to participate or help, I'm sure we'll be able to get ahold of you, or I know Rob down at the chamber will direct you and...
Yep, Rich at K-21, the three of us, and then Jennifer at K-21, kind of that administrative executive session, people.
All right, thank you. All right. Okay, reports. Lynn, you've got the June fund report out. Anything you want to draw attention to?
The funds are all up, we've got tax distributions in June, so.
Okay.
That's what we have to live on for the next six months.
We made it to June, to our first distribution. Very good.
I see we still don't have our CARES Act money.
Oh, actually, our, our...
It's not CARES, ARP.
ARP. So I sent the application in last Wednesday, and we should be getting our, I got notes back from the IFA on Thursday that we'll be getting our distribution in seven to 10 business days. So, any date?
Non-entitlement communities got delayed. They had to, there were some things going on. We just really had the opportunity to apply, was it last week? And Lynn was right on it. So she got, got that application and we're ready to go. I've got a little bit of a report from INDOT, wanted to bring everybody up to speed. I mentioned it, Board of Works this morning. We had a meeting with INDOT last Wednesday, and I know Jeremy was in there, and we listed some of our concerns with the, some of the improvements on Jefferson, or excuse me, on Hickory. And we, I think, have found that they were pretty responsive to our concerns. I got, there was a press release that went out today that you might have seen, talking about the continued improvements and tweaking of the system. But something we asked them to do was to try and eliminate that delay between the light in front of the tracks and the light on 15, and they agreed to that. I was through that light three times today, and there was never, there was nobody queuing up. So I think we're improving the traffic flow with that. That was probably the big thing that came out of the meeting. They're also working to keep traffic moving on 15, give that State Road 15 priority when there's a train on the tracks. And then once that train clears, give some priority to the east-west streets to try and clear those. So that's, that's really what we had envisioned, that these improvements we're going to do. And I know they're committed to doing that. They did admit that there were some concerns that they had as well, and we just agreed that, you know, these, these big improvements, I think, are, have made a difference right away. But there are certainly, we still got a little ways to go. Jeremy, any comments from that meeting? I know they did a lot of listening, so. All right. So hopefully we're heading in the right direction there. And as you all know, State Road 15 is closed at the east-west tracks, Norfolk, or excuse me, CFNE. Appears they got some work done today, they got four more days to go. Things didn't seem too bad in town, but we're only on day one, so we'll see how this goes.
Just a question, because I've been asked, I know some of the parking spots are cordoned off. I'm assuming that's to facilitate maybe the truck traffic turning?
I think it is right here. I believe some of those parking spots up here are cordoned off because of the work being done on the new traffic signal at Indiana. Indiana and Center, which started today as well, so a lot going on. All right. Any questions before we move ahead? All right, let's move into unfinished business. Tonight, we'll consider on second reading ordinance 2021-0702. This basically amends the skateboard in downtown Business District. I just, I know the attorney, city attorney pointed it out last week, that this ordinance has been on the books for some time. And if you look at the ordinance as it reads, all the way down to section 74.7-5, that's all existing. So skateboards have been prohibited in the downtown Business District, looks like since 1974. What we're adding is basically the enforcement and penalties. And I know that was made clear at the last meeting, but I just wanted to make sure you understood that if you go back and look at the code, this is all in the code. We're not changing anything as far as prohibiting the skateboards, we're just creating a means of enforcement. So with that, I will ask if there's any discussion on the ordinance. I know we've had a couple weeks to maybe gain some public discussion on it. And I would ask that you consider it on second reading and final reading.
I noticed that some other communities in Indiana are working with this, and I wondered, and Vernon, I don't know if you can answer this, how would we enforce the penalty when it's a minor that is violating the law? Because that's going to probably generally be what we're dealing with.
Yes, and I have not read that amendment, but oftentimes there'll be a clause in the amendment that would allow recovery against the parents or guardians.
Yeah, and it's not in this particular one. And I was just wondering, if you look at it by enforcing, you know, putting the penalties in, how much is that really going to make a difference if it's mainly minors that we're dealing with?
I'm not an attorney, but I do believe that parents are responsible for their minors would be my, my...
That would be true.
Because that came up last week, that discussion came up. And you're right, there's nothing in there about that, but don't take my word for that. I just assumed, I thought that was the answer that was given.
Yeah, I think it was, but then I noticed in other communities that the opinion was different than that, that they weren't going to be able to enforce it unless there was, like Vernon suggested, some kind of clause in there. And I didn't know if that was something that we needed to think about adding. That just came up over the weekend where I read some of that information.
Yeah, I imagine that it could be amended if you feel the need to do that. I think what we're really trying to do is just send a message that there are penalties now, and that we're serious about enforcing something that's been on the books for 30, 40 years. I think that's really what we're trying to do tonight. And if, I think if enforcement becomes an issue and we feel that legally we need to do that, I don't see that as being a problem, creating an amendment to it, unless you want to wait to do this.
Well, I personally have always felt that the parents are responsible for any of their damages that the kids do or anything like that, get in trouble. I've always felt like the parents are the ones who are going to be held responsible for making sure they do right. They are the ones that should be, if there's a fine, the parents better find it.
They are for damages, yes.
So how does that work? I mean, do we have examples of how that has worked in...
I mean, do we have examples of how that has worked in other cases? Not necessarily skateboarding, where a minor did damage and their parents were held accountable? Because it seems to me that, you know, we can offer the amendment or not, either way. But it doesn't, we don't really know until it goes to court.
I suspect there have been many instances in town where a minor's been involved in a traffic accident or some sort of vandalism, that the city in one way or another has gone after their parents. I don't know that for sure, but I suspect that's happened over the years.
I think the difference that I'm thinking of, there's a difference between damage and a fine for violating. And that's what our attorney pointed out. So, at this point, we have a person, it reads, "A person who violates any provision of this chapter shall be punishable by way of a fine." And so, who would be responsible for that fine if we don't put a clause in that in the case of a minor, the parent or legal guardian would be responsible? I don't know that we have any teeth in this to enforce it. So, I guess there's two ways to look at it. You could pass it as it is and then see if there begins to be problems, you know, with it being enforced. But when I look out here, it's minors that are involved. It's not people over 18. Well, sometimes, but most...
You know, I think we all understand that. And I was just asking Vern if curfew violation would seem to be the same thing. I mean, if there's a fine associated with curfew violation, it doesn't involve violence or damages or anything like that. But it is a breach of city ordinance. And I assume there's a fine that could be levied against that.
I think there's just a referral to probation. I don't know.
Well, did you, I don't know what you want to do. I guess, Diane, tell me what you want to do.
Well, I'm bringing it up to ask the Council whether you feel like this is going to be effective without something in there addressing that. And whether we want to just go ahead and pass it as it is and then wait and see if it's effective or, and then amend it? Or if we need to do it right up front?
I don't have an issue taking action now. And then, if there are issues, we then address it at that time. And we evaluate it. Nobody's paying the fines. So, I have no problem with taking action tonight.
I think I would agree with Jeff.
Well, I would move that we accept the ordinance as written then.
All right. There's a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
All right. Any further discussion?
The only thing I would add would be that I would like to think that the city attorney has taken that into consideration when writing this ordinance. And if he saw a problem, he would have addressed it in here. Now, maybe it's an oversight, but maybe it's not. And he's not here, and I don't know.
Yeah, I'm okay with going ahead with it, but I just think it's something we need to keep in mind.
The issue, I know the issue came up last time. And I do feel like that he was comfortable that it was okay as written. But I would, again, we'll just have to keep our eyes out on that. So, there's been a motion on the floor and a second. Any further discussion?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? So, passes on second reading six to zero?
If I may ask, kind of a follow-up question to this. I don't have young children. I know we had skate park at Boggs. Is that still functioning?
Absolutely.
Okay.
And Larry has, is trying to get a, he's in the middle of a grant application...
Uh huh, right.
To move it down to Market Street.
So, how does that work? Is it open anytime kids want to go there, like, you know, late afternoon, early evening seems to be a time?
Well, there's specific hours.
Kids hungry to do that stuff. Is that open?
I don't know the specific hours, but I know they're not open, it's not an open 24/7 deal.
Larry and I talked about this a little bit. I was in his office last week. And there becomes some problems keeping a skate park open 24/7. Not having certain rules, you know, like a helmet and things like that, which does put the city more liable.
Right.
And I don't really want to speak for Larry, but it's been stated that looking at other municipalities that have skate parks, who have this sort of 24/7 open door policy, the skate parks are much more difficult to keep in repair, keep them in good, safe order. So, I think that Warsaw's got a good plan. I've seen what he would like to do. And it's going to be first class if we get the grant.
Yeah, it's not that we don't want kids to have fun and, you know, use their skateboards. It's the damage that's being done is the problem. So, if we can, you know, let them burn up that energy somewhere else by providing them with a place to do it, that's really what we're after. We don't want to find anybody. We just want them to do it in a place that's designed for it and not ruin public property, break public property.
Yeah, this ordinance, only the boundaries of it is 16 square blocks. That's, you know, that's a very small amount compared to the boundaries of Warsaw. Very small amount.
Thank you.
Okay. Let's move on to new business. Ordinance 2021-0701 is a salary ordinance amendment designed to allow payment of the members of the IT Governance Committee for the rest of this year. Jennifer has passed out information, just general information on the IT Governance Committee. We've talked a bit about it. I know all of you are involved in the organizational review where this became a high priority for the city to manage our really sophisticated infrastructure by utilizing an internal committee to make sure that our network was being maintained, backups were, you know, obviously not an issue. You know, the cybersecurity, the whole thing becomes a, pretty much a central issue. And the original idea was to hire an individual to do this. But I put together a committee of those that seemed to be very knowledgeable of these issues. And you'll see down at the bottom of this sheet, this committee is now formally made up of the GIS Coordinator from Wastewater, Systems Administrator from the Warsaw PD, and the Mayor's Assistant from the Mayor's Office. The fourth individual will be selected by the three individuals named above. So, they'll find folks that have that knowledge within the city and make them that fourth member. Currently, Nick King from the airport, our airport manager, serving in that capacity. So, what we're trying to do tonight is put together an amendment to the salary ordinance so that this group can be compensated for the work they've done. They will also oversee the contract work with BIT, with Brady, who we've hired to take care of our city needs under the guise of the IT Governance Committee. This sheet is pretty good, and it explains what their role is in the city. And I know you may have some questions, I'd be happy to answer. But the important part tonight is getting the salary amendment so we can get them, get them paid for what they've done this year. And I know they started, they've been going for about a year now and worked very hard. So, with that, Jennifer?
Right. So, in front of you, you have the amendment for, it will include general salary ordinance and the Police Department salary ordinance. As Mayor Tomer was explaining, does affect the Mayor's Assistant, GIS Coordinator, and Systems Administrator from the Police Department, Nick King, Department Head. He's also appointed by the mayor on this committee as well. Currently, in the budgets, we have, we have some money set aside and budgeted in the salary ordinance also for an IT Coordinator out of the mayor's budget. But we have, we've got the resources, we have the talent, we have the employees who are really doing a really good job working with BIT, as Joe was talking about, and has taken our needs really quickly and very well, helping out all of the department heads as well. So, this is just an amendment to be able to allow us to pay these four individuals a stipend for the rest of the year. These duties are going to be added in to the three job descriptions for 2022, starting with 2022. So, their salaries will be increased to reflect this additional responsibility and wage for next year. But like Joe was talking about, we really need to get them paid for this year. And the easiest way to do that is through a stipend so that we can create a form through our timekeeping system. And we can just pay them right now for the rest of the year.
Okay, I do have a question then.
Sure.
So, is that taking it retroactively back to the first of the year?
Right. Just, we really thought that it was important to be able to pay them that $5,000 per year to be performing extra duties outside of their normal job description, if you will. So, we're just taking that $5,000 and prorating it. We only, we're going to start with payroll 16. We have about 11 payrolls left to go. So, $5,000 divided by the 11 gives us that amount. That's why that is kind of blaring right there. And we probably should have done it several, several months ago. But it's been taking some time trying to actual formalize the committee, working with the right stuff to make sure that we can get the form in place to be able to drop that onto their pay, their wages. And yeah, just really, really comfortable with it.
Essentially, they're charged with centralizing IT. And you'll note next month when we start in on the budgets, there's a significant increase in the council budget because all of the costs that the departments normally pay individually are being centralized. And those expenses have been taken out of those other budgets and centralized in the council budget. So, that's really important. They're going to look at buying. Anytime a department has a project, an IT project, they'll sit down with the IT Governance Committee, make sure that the software is compatible, that it's not duplicative, which we've had some of that. And we've got Elements is a program that is a very powerful asset management program that will allow many, many applications across the spectrum of the city. And that's one of the first projects they're taking on, is to harness the power of Elements for our working departments. Another example, they're creating an asset management plan that looks at the age of all our computers, centralizes computer purchasing, kind of tries to anticipate the lifespan of a computer and can potentially avoid a crash and loss of data by knowing when certain hardware needs to be replaced. They're also creating a training program for new employees to potentially learn Elements and to learn, you know, a lot of the basic programs, the Microsoft Office programs and Adobe Photoshop and all the things that all the different departments use, you know, over time. But this would be a central training program. That's, again, another example of, you know, things that they have sat down and really worked through. And I would encourage you to talk to any of them about what they've done and how excited they are. They really feel like they're an internal component. In other words, they're boots on the ground within the departments and can really understand IT well enough to make sure that our city is using our network and our fiber network and has the backup we needed, the security we need, because we haven't had that direction. So, IT Governance basically means they're going to set the rules on how you do all these things. And that's really, that's probably going to take, it's going to take them a good year to get a lot of this implemented.
And they can also provide the resources to the department heads when they have simple questions that maybe don't warrant a call to Brady, to BIT, or to Travis. I use Stacy quite a bit. She's right around the corner, so I'm glad that she's right there. She's helping me with my new HR software program. We've met with them a couple of times just about some simple, simple adjustments, simple projects, if you will.
Another example, we talked with, some departments had needs for ID cards. They wanted to be able to identify themselves if they're out working with the public. Other departments needed that, but also needed a chip in those things for access to buildings. The discussion mushroomed, and each department had their own need. So, we invited those departments into a meeting with the IT Governance Committee, and they've got a solution for everybody and a plan over time. And that was just, you know, one 45-minute meeting, just putting everybody in the same room with those, with that committee. They saw what people wanted, and they came up with a solution. So, again, just another example of how we're going to really benefit. And this was, again, one of the glaring concerns that was really highlighted in that organizational review, that we needed that.
Are these meetings held extra from their normal work or during their workdays?
During their workdays. It does not have overtime or after-hours. Is that what, is that what you're asking?
Yes.
It's part of their duties. These, the summary of, and we're, we'll tweak those down as we keep moving. But they're going to be added to those three job descriptions. And if one of those employees who currently have that title or is working in that job, if they should leave the city, the candidate that we're going to be replacing that person with must come to us with these skills. And that is the justification, if you will, for the increase in the wage. And I, we are assuming that this amount is a good start. As you may or may not know, I know several of you, like on the Wage Committee, knows that we're in the middle of a wage analysis. And so, this information has been sent down to Wagner, and they may come back and say, you might want to increase that or, you know, you look kind of good. So, that will be at the end of the year.
Well, actually, the first charge that committee had was to find an IT individual for the city.
Correct.
And they went out and found that the range of compensation was all across the board. The range of qualifications was all across the board. And they really were, they knew we had a good relationship and a contractual relationship with Brady as far as our hardware needs. But they felt like, as far as managing and setting up, you know, the protocols and the rules for the city, that it was much less of a risk for those four who had worked, combined many, many years of service for the city versus bringing somebody in who that may not understand how the departments are different.
Right.
So, that was their, part of their recommendation was to hire contractually Brady and then to make this IT Governance Committee a permanent portion of the solution.
I personally like working with them because the team building, the trust is already there with these individuals. They know the ins and outs of the city. They know what we all need. It just seemed like a really good, good fit. Win for me, win for everybody. Win win.
That fourth member that they choose...
Right, right now?
Right now, it's Nick?
Right now, it's Nick. He is, he knows more about computers than I ever will in my life. I mean, he just, I don't...
He's young.
Oh, that's probably it. But he's bringing something to the committee that I, that it's really, really good. Now, let's just say that as they peel off and they start new projects or they start working more with Elements or doing something different, maybe Nick's talent isn't quite needed at that time. Maybe they'll recommend somebody else. So, Joe would be able to... So Joe would be able to then pick somebody else out and then be able to pay that stipend to that individual.
The idea is that we didn't want to put in the job description of an airport manager that they have this expansive IT knowledge. You know, when you go out to hire an airport manager, you're going to hire an airport manager. And David Bell would be the first to admit, even though he's not with us, he probably didn't know anything about computers, but he was a good airport manager. And we didn't want to try and limit ourselves to a good airport manager who also knew IT. So Nick was identified by the other group that he had those skills, but we did not want to put that in his job description. So that's why that fourth member will always be somewhat open.
Kind of in flux.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thoughts? It, it was tough to try and figure out the way to make this work, but I like the stability. Your systems administrator at, at the police department, your GIS coordinator at Wastewater are always going to have those skills. And, and, you know, fortunately, in my office, the communications side of this is, is an important part of that job description. So we felt like those three positions were, would, would always have that type of knowledge as part of their skills. And, you know, we can put that in the job description, but the, the airport manager may or may not, you know. Frankly, it could be somebody from the Parks Department.
Could be fire, it could be as they start to evolve.
Yeah. Anybody that comes in that's got that type of knowledge could be added to this as the fourth member.
Correct.
So is this committee going to be permanent moving forward?
Yes.
Yes.
So it's not just, we're not just talking about calendar year 2021?
No.
No, no, no. Mike, you're going to see, excuse me, in the 2022 salary ordinances, this has been built in for, just moving forward.
I mean, that's the whole reason for doing this. We wanted to memorialize these job descriptions to include these skills. And, and that's, that's why instead of just offering a stipend to whoever happens to be on it, we wanted to have a structure moving forward that will, no matter, as, as those other jobs turn over, when, when we go out and look for a new systems administrator at the police department, a new communications director, the mayor's office, or a new JAS coordinator, we're very confident that those skills will be part of, and, and we will base our decision to hire on that.
Yes, yes.
So this figure that I see here, this, this biweekly stipend, this is going to cover retroactive, like Cindy asked. I just want to be clear, back to January. So going forward in 2022, that biweekly number is going to be pretty much cut in half.
It's like 100 and, 100 and, it's 5,000 divided by 26, whatever that would amount would be. Right, yes.
Yeah, I, I guess I, you know, don't have a problem with the amount. And, and, you know, I think building it into the job descriptions is good. I guess I struggle a little bit with making it retroactive.
Right, I know, I know that that amount looks really, it very, very concerning. But yeah, to remember, and Cindy, I, 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 when I looked at that, I thought, oh my gosh, how am I going to put that in a salary ordinance? But they really started this last year, they truly did. It, on our end, it's taken a little bit of time to get the ordinances in place to make sure right stuff was able to be, to do that form drop for the stipend. I went on vacation, so.
They went through last year and interviewed every department and took inventory and just to try and get a lay of the land and, and again, get an idea of what we've got and how many departments are running extra copies of something that we never needed to use. And, you know, how many departments are in need of something and just don't know how to do it. They went and took a, did an interview with every department. And, and, I mean, that started last year. This was the highest priority on the organizational review. And we started right away with it. So they've been going, they've been going a year now. And they'll be a year and a half into it by the end of this year.
Cindy, the other alternative or the other option that I had when I was trying to figure out the easiest way to do this would be to take that amount and divide it by an hourly wage and then come to you and ask for a salary ordinance amendment to increase their hourly wage or biweekly wage by this amount of money. It got really dicey because we have individuals who work 80 hours a pay period. We have some people who are salaried, we have some people who are salaried non-exempt. We have some people who work 70 hours a week. And taking that lump, it just, it just didn't work. It, it wasn't, it wasn't clean. So by just dropping it this way as a stipend, it's not actually going to go towards their hourly rate. So if they are working overtime, they're not earning time and a half based upon this. It is just an extra, like a tool allowance or a cellphone stipend or a, a uniform clothing allowance, it's just something extra.
Valid concern.
For this year, for this year.
Valid concern by Cindy, but what you're, you're telling us is this is basically we're catching up.
We are absolutely catching up, yes, yes.
Which was priority number one.
Correct.
Instead of one individual, we have four.
Yes, yes.
20 meetings minimum, I'm looking at.
They're probably working more, doing more than that.
But I'm just saying on the little sheet here, I'm seeing 20 minimum and $20,000 a year, the, the four become one. Okay. I also like it, Mayor, there's, again, the goal has always been House here, we have other department heads, Jim, this, this improved communication. I really believe the years I've been here, that your leadership, others in the council, were improving communication. And when I think of technology, which I know just a very, very little about, it's critical. I hear Board of Works, Council, how often they need to communicate with each other, and it's just, it doesn't always work. So I'm hoping the good will come out of this, the team approach.
Right.
Hey Jeff, I'd like to add, just something in this, a little bit cemetery. Two weeks ago, I walked into the secretary's computer to meet you. I will never be that fool person, by the way. I went, turned it off before she got there, I turned it back on, guess what? Okay, I'm good, right? Today's later, I called Travis, her hard drive's gone, we're going to lose everything, we'll put a new hard drive, yes. How you done? And monitor that system. For a flooding player, that means a lot, I have a lot of data, I do GIS coordinate, I have AutoCAD, I have all sorts of stuff. And for them to be able to monitor and watch that, and we have mine crashed one time and we didn't get over. So here was their monitoring telling me it's an error in that system and we need to change the hard drive. I have the old hard drive, told me to save it, protected whenever it still has data, but I know hers is going to crash all of the way.
Hal, you make a great point. You know, you're talking about being proactive, monitoring and being proactive. It seems like every IT experience we all have is reactive. Oh no, something broke, oh no, the, the hard drive's done. So that, that's a great point. And I, I, again, I would say that's the, pretty much the, the goal of this group is to try and get a handle on this thing, so we, we're not worried about those things.
Jennifer, will this three, or, you know, with, with a fourth swing person, will this eventually lead to a full-time IT position?
Possibly.
And eliminate these, these four positions?
Possibly, right, so.
Or do you foresee this being?
Maybe.
A way forward?
Yeah, depending on, on what they come up with. We do have the IT coordinator position budgeted and in the salary ordinance under the mayor. We, we just really felt like that we didn't need to spend that.
Well, I'll admit, when I first saw this, I was a bit taken aback with you explaining it and understanding what, what the purpose is and knowing that we identified IT as a real critical infrastructure issue we needed to deal with. I can see where this really is, is probably the most cost-effective way to do it.
Well, absolutely.
Because you don't have to hire somebody, we're already paying insurance and, and salary. And, okay, they're going to make a little more, but I don't begrudge them that. Especially if we're going to be proactive, like the mayor said, and, and.
And I just, yeah, again, I just want to stress that I think all the employees and department heads especially, they really have the trust already built up in, in these four individuals.
And it's a scary world out there.
It sure is.
You have ransomware attacks and, and we're vulnerable, we're as vulnerable as anyone.
Sure.
Hopefully, this will, will help us in that.
Well, they're doing an encryption program study right now. Again, these are things that, if you're a reactive IT, you're not doing those things.
Right.
Yeah, this goes way beyond entry cards and hard drive scratch, to me. This is, this is really an important thing today.
Right.
I just have a quick question. Next year, when, when we're evaluating the budget, is this going to show up as a $5,000 stipend for these individuals or have you now?
Right, so the three individuals, the, the three, and I, and I want to try to get away from the individuals because if we're not paying the individuals, we're paying that job description.
Yeah, the three positions.
The three positions, correct. So the, the $5,000 will be divided by whatever, their biweekly, their hourly, their 35 hours a week, their 70, I mean, who, it, it, there's just so many. That's going to be added to their hourly wage or their biweekly wage. You are going to see this, the same language in the police, fire, and general for that person that Joe gets to pick, because we don't know which department that's going to be. Right now, it's Nick, but again, next year it could be Fire Department or it could be another person at the police department. So the language will be there, but the three, it's built in. So they'll already be receiving that.
So what we're basically doing is increasing the qualifications to hold that job.
Yes.
Absolutely.
And then we are paying for that.
The expectations.
Well said.
Yes, yes.
And that was very purposeful. That's what this whole thing is about, is to make sure that those job descriptions are now part of this whole thing.
Right. And I'm like Hal, I, I pretend like I know, but I know how to, whatever. But I went on vacation, and when I got back, my, my printer had broke, my scanner. And when I got back, my printer was up and running, I didn't have to do anything. Usually a Monday would have been a train wreck for me, trying to figure that all out. And that was worth it right there.
So were you three on the wage committee, were you part of this whole discussion?
We talked about it a couple of weeks ago, we, we tried.
So you're all on board with this?
We explained it.
Yeah, I don't think we knew, well, we kind of did a particular, but we didn't realize.
We were just fleshing out, we hadn't heard the end result of whether or not it was going to continue to be a stipend going forward or be absorbed into the job description. I like it a lot better absorbed into the job description going forward after this.
Yeah, I do too, a good point.
And so basically, we're just considering for this year, paying people for what they've been doing.
Yeah, and that, that's exactly right.
Hey, I've served on a trash committee earlier.
And you did wonderful.
Thank you. Thank you.
You're elected, buddy.
I can do that.
All right, Mike, the next, next time that it, the loader goes down, you'll be on the pickup.
All right, so I know we got, we're just getting started here. Got some work to do tonight. Is, are there any more comments or feel comfortable making a move on this? And this will come back for a second reading.
Yes.
I move to approve on first reading.
Motion's been made, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Diane, any further discussion or questions? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, passes on first reading, six to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, and we'll be back, Jen, you'll be back, August meeting with this, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm in conference, but I will, I will be here.
Someone will be here.
First, no, I'll, I'll be here.
All right, very good, thank you. All right, Hal, you're up. I, I know this is something that hasn't been done since 2015. I know you approached me about it, I asked you to take a look at it. You've done a good job of, of presenting this. I know the cemetery board has considered it. Jerry, I know you're involved in this as well. So Hal, I'll let you talk about the proposed increases in fees for the cemetery. And then Jerry, if you've got any comments, please jump in.
I believe you got a current sheet that tells you from previous, our current price to the, the new prices. The reason for this is in the 14 years, it's usually been seven, eight years in that area that we move up in price. So we hold our price for quite a long time. With everything going on in the cemetery, new road, new addition, different stuff, I felt it was time to start it now, to get into this new road, to create some new, more revenue for us. Like Mayor said, it's been 2015 since we have raised it. I kind of did the math, it's $20 a year would be $20 more than what's on here, but I, like I say, I just think it's time to raise. Big question I get is, do we compare to other cemeteries? That's real tough for us. Most of them are very small cemeteries. You have to get into the private sector to get the size we are. We're currently 100 acres and we have 18,458 guests currently. I'm mapping on GIS, so we have quite a few guests in the, in the facility. So I come to you with this, in the yellow you'll see is fees that did not go up. When it becomes infants and a small one, we do not charge much for that at all, little ones. Everything else, resident, non-resident fees, I think it's pretty explanatory what we did here. To compare, which is really hard in a cemetery because it fluctuates so much every year, if you compare to 2020 revenue, this would create about 51,000 more in revenue for me. I look at it more of a tax, I do not make my full rev, my full budget. We currently make under a third, and this would get us up to at least a third. My brother, to take it off the taxpayers, is kind of what I look at this. So if there's any questions, we'd love to answer.
I heard you say 51,000?
Fifty compared to, and please, that's, that's.
I know, you're a big part.
What I knew fluctuates so much compared to full.
Those helpful.
It's how many lots you can sell, and, and there's never a study. I can tell you, the only thing close is we, we laid a rest anywhere from 220, 250 people a year. That's about as close.
Jerry, you want to jump in, any comments from your perspective?
Well, of course, I was showing this to my wife, and she says, oh. She says, you're going to raise it? And I said, yeah. And I said, because it hasn't been raised for about six, seven years. And I said, everybody else has been raising theirs. I said, we're getting a lot of people from the bigger cities that's coming down, trying to buy lots, if I'm not mistaken.
We do, we, uh, mainly, they, they, we're residents here at one given time. Fort Wayne's a good example. We'll have people that lived here, grew up here, and they moved to Fort Wayne, and they'll come back. And many years ago, this was explained to me, I, I told the funeral director, I thought this was kind of strange. I said, they live in Fort Wayne, they buried here. And they said, well, they were born, raised here. And he said, I'm going to kind of throw a curveball, they actually own two lots in Fort Wayne currently. And I'm like, well, that makes no sense to me. The lady, her husband passed away, the lady bought two lots off of me and laid her husband's rest cheaper than the opening fee of the one in Fort Wayne. But you've got to remember, those are private, they're not taxes.
Right.
So everybody always around here, I mean, Leesburg and stuff, they're smaller, nothing against them, they're just small, and it's hard to compare pricing, I mean, for what we do and what we offer to take care of the place.
And we offer such a beautiful cemetery too. I mean, cemeteries are cemeteries, but yours is outstanding for the, around the area.
Thanks very much.
I feel that.
I have a good crew, I mean, they do, they do a great job. And it is like a park, I, I mean, if you guys, I know a lot of you've been out there. I mean, we have people come in every day, we have walkers, runners, people having picnics. It's the same thing, it's just a safe place, a nice place for them to be.
All right. Questions, comments, thoughts? Can I anticipate, if you took action on this tonight, it does require two readings, so we could consider this first reading, depending on your.
Bring it home, Jerry.
Yeah. Well, okay, I would move to re, approve the 2021-07-03 cemetery board meeting. Raise?
All right, thanks, Jerry, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Cindy, any other further questions of Hal or Jerry, comments before we vote?
I may throw in there, if you looked, you talked about with your skateboarding fees. If you look in there, mine's going up for after four. Board of Regents says no funerals after four. We've had them push that limit, actually go over, and the response was, what are you going to charge me? So the reason it went from 500 to 1,000 is because our rates are getting closer now, and I wanted to put that meat there, so they didn't. Now, we have an out-town funeral home, we stopped by a train, we'll definitely do it. But we can waiver that, the attorney made that in the, in the rules, that I can waiver that fee if that happens.
All right, there's a motion.
For civil service.
There's a motion on the floor and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, motion passes, six to zero on first reading. I don't know if you wish to, I would assume you probably want to wait till the next meeting to consider a second reading. I think with an increase in fees, it makes sense.
Yes.
Yeah. All right, thank you. Thanks, Hal. All right. Jeremy? Item three, Resolution 2021-07-04 is a transfer ordinance for redevelopment, allocation, and edit. allocation, and edit, and I'll let you take it over.
Well, yeah, so the redevelopment transfer request actually went before the Redevelopment Commission at their last meeting. When I did the budgets in 2021, or 2020, for the 2021 year, there was a miscalculation in the bond payment. I had an older schedule, that was not an accurate schedule, so the bond payment was based on that schedule. So, the $7,050 is just making that adjustment, so I'm moving money from improvements other than building to debt service, to pay off that bond, to make that bond payment. The edit, like I said in the memo, is a transfer of $100,000 for the Owens project that we're working on with KEDCO. The city budgeted roughly half a million in edit for that project, but giving the way we're acquiring the property and packaging it for a developer, it was easier to have KEDCO do the development, preliminary development agreement. So, they will be doing that, and we will be basically paying them professional services, increasing the professional services contract for that pre-development work that'll be done by Wigan. That's all in the works, that agreement with KEDCO's in the works, so we need to transfer that 100,000 from, I think it's in 444, to 310, which is professional services, and then we'll have an amendment to the KEDCO contract to pay that pre-development work to be done for the Owens project.
So, just a note, in the actual resolution, there is a typo. When you look under major, minor budget classification, you'll see edit, and it shows improvements to other buildings going to debt service, it should say professional service. So, the numbers are right, the account numbers are correct, but it was just a typo, basically, because it does refer to professional service elsewhere, so.
I'll make a motion, we pass Resolution 2021-07-04.
Motion's been made, is there a second?
I'll second it.
All right. Any discussion or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, passes six to zero. All right, Jeremy, you are still up. These next three items are all intertwined, and I would expect that we'll go one at a time, and Jeremy will explain. Essentially, this is the establishment and funding of the revolving loan fund that is going to support the incentive that we made, you all agreed with the MOU last year, to Next Remedy. And that basically was, obviously, the stimulus, and we all know they're now in the building. We're having an open house here real soon, but now we have to take care of the details, and Jeremy's here tonight to present, start with item four, which is a public hearing, I'll add, and this would be an additional appropriation to fund the revolving loan fund. So, Jeremy?
Yeah, so the first step, back in 2020, we approved MOU with Next Remedy, and part of that MOU was two different things we were going to do. One was a equipment purchase through the Redevelopment Commission, which was done late fall last year. And the second one was this forgivable loan agreement through edit, which was to be exercised or approved when they entered the building. They've been doing the manufacturing there, but their offices were being finished up, and they're moving, moved into the building at this point, thus triggering this portion of that MOU. The first step would be the additional appropriation, and the reason for that is, we, last year, the intent was to use Next Remedy to set up the Edit Revolving Loan Fund, but shortly after we did the Next Remedy MOU, Wishbone came in with a similar project that they were working on, which actually started the creation of that Edit Revolving Loan Fund. So, that fund has been created, it's there, but it doesn't have any money in it. So, the additional appropriation is putting the 250,000 that we agreed to in the MOU into that fund, with the 50,000 being paid out this year, and then the next year is being paid out January, within 30 days of January 1st, assuming that they meet the metrics that are in the loan agreement that we'll get to in a little bit. So, this first step is just creating that additional appropriation to put the 250,000 into the Edit Revolving Loan Fund, and then we will approve the loan agreement and so forth, that would then exercise that, those funds to be paid out. And this is a public hearing, so you'll have to open it up to the public.
So, you'll notice when you get your budget books, Fund 2022 is the Edit Revolving Loan Fund, and that's where you'll find these allocations for your approval. But tonight, that's for 2022. 2021, we've got our first payment due, so we need to get the money into that fund and appropriate it tonight.
Going forward, that 50,000 will be budgeted in that Edit Revolving Loan Fund. Every year, you'll approve that 50,000 for Next Remedy for that five-year period, or four years, whatever it's on.
Questions from counsel first?
You just answered mine.
Okay. All right, so again, as an additional appropriation, if there are no other comments, I will open this up to the public, and ask if there's anyone present who wishes to speak on behalf of the additional appropriation, on behalf of the petition? Sure?
So, my name is Chris Cook, I am the Chief Operating Officer at Next Remedy Solutions. Just wanted to give thanks to the City of Warsaw and the Redevelopment Commission for the opportunity. We have officially entered the building as of second week of June, and really enjoying the space right now. Still a lot of finishing, I believe, I hope, everything's finished by this week for our grand opening on Friday. We look forward to filling out the space as we continue to grow. We've invested a million dollars in capital equipment, and over a million dollars outfitting the building itself, so looking forward with significant plans for continued growth. I believe we have current count of 85 people, and look forward to continuing to add to it. Thank you, and it's really all I have to say.
All right, thank you.
Appreciate it.
So, does that mean you're in favor of this? Just clarifying for a moment.
All right, is there anyone else that wishes to speak on behalf of the petition? Okay. Hearing none, is there anyone who is voicing any opposition to the petition? Anyone speaking against the petition? Okay, with that, I'll close the public hearing portion of the meeting, ask Jeremy to come back up and give a few final comments, and then ask for your consideration. Again, this is, will require two readings, so tonight, we hope to take some action on this.
Certainly, if you have any questions, I can answer them, but other than that, I think this is the next step, is just to approve this, and then we can talk about whether or not you approve it on the second reading.
Jeremy, it's hard to hear you.
I said, "I don't have any other comments, if you have any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer them, but we can talk about after you approve the first reading, whether or not you should approve the second reading."
Well, I would move to approve Ordinance Number 2021-07-04.
Motion's been made, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second, any further comments or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, Ordinance 2021-07-04 passes six to zero on first reading.
It would be my recommendation, if we can, to pass this on second reading, this was a publicly advertised meeting, and certainly anybody that could have been here, would have been here. This MOU has been in our approval for over a year, the loan will proceed forward, and there's other things we have to do, also, from a timely standpoint, I would like to keep moving forward with this, and get the initial $50,000 payment paid out. The other thing is, I will not be here August 2nd. So, you could approve it on August 2nd, but I won't be here, I'll be on vacation.
Is there a motion to suspend the rules and consider second reading tonight?
So moved. I'll second.
All right, further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, so I will ask for your consideration of the second reading of Ordinance 2021-07-04. Having passed first reading unanimously, I would ask for your consideration to pass it on second and final reading, if you so desire.
I move to approve 21-07-04 on second read.
I'll second.
Thank you. Any further discussion or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Second reading, Ordinance 2021-07-04 passes unanimously, six to zero.
Thank you.
All right. So, the next step, Jeremy, would be the resolution authorizing the loan from the fund, so...
Yeah, so this resolution's pretty bland, really, all it's doing is offering to you the loan agreement, that is, the attachment, but you would approve this resolution authorizing the loan, and then you're going to approve the actual loan agreement. Like I said, this resolution just goes through pretty much the MOU, the timeframe in which it was approved, and then 250,000, there's not much to it, the actual loan agreement is where all the meat is at, and we'll discuss that after the resolution.
Which is next, yeah. But as Jeremy said, this resolution does include acknowledgement of the MOU that you all considered and agreed to last year, so...
And I know they had milestones to meet, and I believe the first one was getting in there, right?
Yeah, that was, step one was, they had to occupy the building to initiate the loan agreement, which they have done, and there are, the loan agreement has those, in Appendix I has those rules or things they have to hit, markers they have to hit, and we'll go over that in the loan agreement.
So again, is there any questions on Resolution 2021-07-03?
I'll make a motion, we approve Resolution 2021-07-03.
Thanks, Diane, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Jack, any final questions or concerns on Resolution 2021-07-03? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, resolution passes six to zero. Thank you. All right, on to item number six, and as Jeremy said, this is where the meat and potatoes are.
So, I'll go through some of the loan agreement, obviously, it's for $250,000, five, for five years, $50,000 a year, dispersed annually, January the first, within 30 days of January 1st of every year, following the first payment, which will be, will be executed once this agreement is in place, we'll pay out the first 50,000, and then the next payments will occur within 30 days of January 1st. This is a forgivable loan, assuming that they meet the requirements within Appendix I or Appendix 1. There's no rate on it, assuming that they continue to comply with those. However, if they were to fail to comply, it would all be paid back, whatever's being paid out. So, let's say in two years, they failed to comply, we would not pay that 50,000, and if they had accepted 100,000, they would pay that back at 3% plus prime, which is in here, and they would be in a 36-month payment schedule that we would initiate for the repayment of that loan, assuming they didn't meet their goals. Obviously, we expect them to meet their goals. The goals are laid out within that, in the promissory note under Appendix 1, and you see the total number of employees and hourly wages. So, as we pay out, we will expect them to provide that information to us to make sure that they are compliant with Appendix 1. The other question that was asked earlier, and I think I gave the wrong answer to Mike, this loan does say under 1A, that the payments will assist rent payments, so this is specific to rent payments.
Jeremy, and if I remember correctly, these metrics that are set up in Appendix 1 were somewhat mirrored after state incentives and metrics that are used to meet the same requirements from the state, so I think that's where these numbers came from.
Yes, this is the same, the metrics are the same that was applied to the state for their credit, employee credit.
So, questions?
Jeremy, where was that you just pointed out?
So, under 1A, the last sentence, so page one, all the way down at the bottom, it starts, and then it ends on page two at the top, and I can read it to you, it says, "To and including January 1st, 25th, to be used by Next Remedy in assisting with the payment of a portion of the rent under its lease to occupy the building," parentheses, the loan. So, it is specific to paying portions of that lease.
Okay. Thank you.
Others?
It looks like with 85 employees, you've already exceeded your number of employees for the next couple of years, so good job.
As long as they're there next year?
Yeah.
If not, I'd ask you to consider Resolution 2021-07-05. Excuse me?
Just the agreement.
Yes, the revolving loan fund agreement as presented.
I would make that motion, Mayor.
Thank you, is there a second?
I'll second that.
All right. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, thank you. Jeremy, thank you for all your hard work on this. Counsel, thank you. I know you made this commitment, and I think the fruits of your labor are paying off, we're really excited to have Next Remedy as a pole position out in the tech park, and we're really excited to get in and see the building, put a nice investment in it, and I did have a little sneak preview a couple of months ago, and they're busy in there, I'll tell you that, very exciting, so, and thank you, thanks for coming.
Thanks.
Appreciate it. All right, final item tonight is Resolution 2021-07-05. Essentially, this would waive the non-compliance, the tax abatement, and I'll have Jeremy discuss this, this is for Little Crow Lofts.
Yeah, so every year, there's a specific timeframe, which they have to, I think it's May 15th.
It was May 21st, every year this year.
May 21st this year, around there, first, second week in May, to supply their CF1s for the following year. Little Crow Lofts LLC did not get theirs into us prior to that deadline, but they still wish to apply for that tax abatement that they were granted initially a few years back. The process for that is, they have to hold a public hearing, you have to approve a waiver of non-compliance, and then after which, you can approve the actual CF1 and submit it, and we'll submit it to the county. So, that's what Little Crow Lofts is requesting from you tonight, is to approve this non-compliance waiver. It is a public hearing, so you'll have to open it up to the public, after which, if you choose to approve it, then you can grant them, or you can approve their CF1 that is also attached to the non-compliance waiver. If you remember correctly, Little Crow Lofts was purely a residential play, it was an affordable housing project, also, the tax abatement that we granted was for the money spent on the project, which they did obviously make, it is occupied by residents at this point, and it is an affordable housing project. And we approve these tax abatements, pretty much for all of our affordable housing projects, primarily because we get points on the actual scoring, that gets us awarded the money, so the more we give up to a certain threshold, the more a city commits to a project, the more points it scores, the more likely it's to get funded. So, we've done that for the senior housing project that's on Market Street, we're doing that for the Arnold, potential Arnold project that we're submitting for, I think, this month, so in the next week, I think it gets submitted. So, it's pretty common for us to approve these abatements for affordable housing.
So, again, just to clarify, we will hold a public hearing here shortly to make sure that there are nobody that objects to the compliance, non-compliance, and then if we close that, we will consider, you will consider whether you approve the non-compliance waiver, and also, at the same time, allow them that abatement, the way it reads in here. So, let's open up the public hearing and ask if there's anybody that, I'm sorry, I didn't give you all the chance to ask questions first.
I was wondering, is this the first time they've ever been late with their request?
The reason.
Hmm?
Right, that's what I go to, I was thinking the same thing, the reason why.
I don't remember.
It's possible that they could have been late before, but are you from Little Crow by any chance, sir?
Yeah.
Okay, have you guys been late before?
Not at all.
Okay.
I think sometimes, to answer your question, Jerry, a lot of times, they may change managers, or sometimes they change tax consultants. We have this happen probably two or three times a year, in different entities.
Yeah, I thought they've been gave a long... Yeah, I thought, I always thought they then gave a long period of time of warning about getting these in. That's, and I see them coming in late every once in a while. Different businesses.
Well, the other thing is, a lot of them, a lot of these corporations file extensions, which makes it harder for their tax consultants to complete the forms. I mean, it's, it's, it's not atypical.
And I think last year, there was an extension on when they could even file them.
Because of, yeah.
Because of the pandemic.
Yeah.
But this year, it went back to actually May 17.
Yeah.
So as I understand it, they, they've really done all that we've asked, that this just slipped through the cracks, and they came in three weeks late?
Yes.
It's gonna happen.
Others, before I open the public hearing? Thanks, Jeremy. All right, is there anyone that wishes to speak on behalf of the petition? Any comments you'd like to make, sir?
I'd like to.
State your name, and I'm happy to have you.
My name is Brian Feeney. I'm the asset manager responsible for Little Crow Lofts on behalf of Commonwealth Development Corporation, who is the ultimate owner of this project.
What was your last name, Brian?
Feeney, yes.
If you can speak into the microphone, it would help.
Sorry about that.
The microphone doesn't pick up too well.
At the beginning of this year, we had some staff turnover, and due to COVID, we've had some issues doing some backfill. So in the interim, what we have done, and going forward, will continue to do, is engage pivotal tax solutions to manage all of our real estate tax obligations, not only for this project, but for our entire portfolio. To that end, you know, we continue to provide the 42 units that were originally agreed upon as part of the IHCDA agreement to receive the tax credits. We are in continued compliance with that, the IRS regulations, and the regulatory agreement for that project. And that is also a preservation of a historic project, and we are also in compliance with the historic tax credit obligations for that deal. So if there are any questions, I'd be more than happy to entertain them.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak on behalf of the petition to grant the noncompliance waiver? All right, is there anyone wish to speak against waiving the noncompliance? Anyone wishing to speak against it? All right, hearing none, I'll close the public hearing. And Jeremy, any final comments before counsel considers action on Resolution 2021-07-05?
No, just if you have any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer them.
Again, am I correct in assuming that if they approve this, they also approve the abatement?
Uh, no. So they would approve the noncompliance, and then we will go, approve the CF1 afterwards, yes.
Says in the last sentence, "And finds that Little Crow Lofts shall be entitled to the tax abatement provided under Resolution 2021-07-05 for the 2021 tax year payable 2022." I, I can separate them, it doesn't really matter. All right, let's vote on the waiver of noncompliance, 2021-07-05. Is there a motion?
It's your recommendation to approve.
Yes.
Okay. I'll make a motion.
Okay. I'll second the motion.
All right, further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Resolution 2021-07-05 passes unanimously. I will now ask the council to consider granting the abatement approving the CF1.
I'll make a motion. We approve the CF1.
Right.
I'll second it.
Very anxious group here, all right? I think we've got a second and a third. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right. Thanks, Jeremy.
Thank you.
All right. Any other matters come before the council? I will remind you that our next meeting and, and the following meeting will be starting at 6:00 PM. I'd ask you to mark that in your calendars. Lynn, any more comments on budgets? Your, I think your books should be out this week.
That's my hope. Last minute changes, keep going on, so.
All right.
Mayor, this was sitting here at my
That was mine.
Yeah.
Okay, okay, I didn't know.
I'm sorry, I didn't take it.
That was my question.
Be at 6:00?
Pardon me?
You say the next one will be at 6:00?
Yes.
Oh, okay, okay.
The next two.
Next two.
All right.
Yeah.
Any other items carried forward? Or questions, comments from visitors? Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All right, thank you.
Jeremy, thanks for being here.
Lynn, do you have some signatures?
Yes.
Run home that day.